Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley on May 16, 2017. Our first presentation will be the recognition of courageous Armada Elementary Kindergarteners. Mayor Gutierrez will present certificates of recognition to Destiny Olah-Tanji, and Deja Olantangi, Poetry Addison, and Ava Williams from Armada Elementary School.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, on behalf of the City Council, we will be presenting and recognizing these four courageous young girls, kindergarteners, who acted swiftly during a medical emergency at their school site at Armada Elementary during their after-school care at Child Place. So if I could just have the family and also the four girls come up here to be recognized? Okay. All right. Okay, and then we'll just face this way. All right. Okay, that way. There you go. Oh, this way. Okay. All right. Okay. They saw their teacher was unconscious, unfortunately, and immediately knew that she needed help. After trying several times to wake her, these girls demonstrated extraordinary heroism and took control of the situation. Three of them stayed in the classroom comforting Mrs. Godino by rubbing her back while Deja ran to the school's front office to get help. So this is Deja right here. So let's give her an applause. Deja alerted the front office staff by saying that "My teacher needs help," allowing the office staff to commence emergency measures and dial 911. And this is really amazing because, I mean, there are only five, you know, or five or six years old, and for a five or six-year-old to actually think about that and to go seek the help, I mean, that to me is just amazing. As our emergency responders often say, every minute counts, especially in an emergency. So they really took the initiative in saving Mrs. Godino's life. These brave young ladies demonstrated clear thought and a great maturity while coming to the aid of their teacher. The City Council is very proud of Destiny, Deja, Poetry, and Ava, and we're pleased to recognize them this evening. So congratulations, and let me go ahead and get you your certificates. Okay, let's go ahead and give them another applause.
Here's one.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is Ava, okay. All right. Okay. I was wondering.
Fashionably late.
Okay, so Deja, this one's yours. Okay, congratulations.
Shake his hand.
And then Poetry, this one's yours.
Shake his hand, baby.
Congratulations. Ava, this one is yours. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. And Destiny? This one's yours. Thank you so much.
Turn around so they can see your voice.
So we're gonna go ahead and...
Turn it the other way, so they can see.
Okay. Thank you so much. Are you sure? Okay, okay. Hate to put you on the spot. Okay, and then if you could just have... With a hand, shake each other's hands. So you're gonna shake each other's hands with your hand. Okay? Good job, girls. Good job, girls. Good job. Good job. Oh. Yes. I also would like to, as the mayor as well, like to recognize the assistant principal that's at the school at Armada Elementary, Vivian Chang. If you could please stand up and be recognized. She actually also came to the aid of Mrs. Godino. So thank you so much, Vivian.
So much courage in the room. Congratulations and thank you for a job well done. The second presentation will be for Volunteer of the Year, Kelly Vella and nominees. If you can please come up. I have Frank Garcia, Milton Adams, Linda Davis, and the Emergency Response Force within the Fire Department. If you could please come up.
Which is the one for Kelly? Right here. Right here. Who's Kelly? Kelly, come forward. Present you with this award. Okay, and we also have a proclamation for you up here. Let me read this. Stop, sit.
He's not ready. Kelly Vella has been a part of the city's animal services team volunteering as a shelter photographer for over three years. The commitment and the excitement Kelly brings to the animal shelter are constantly on display with the obvious passion she has for the animals in the shelter. Nominated for the second straight year, Kelly has distinguished herself from her fellow nominees in both her continued and sustained commitment and her personal touch. Kelly's capturing of the best pictures of the animals has resulted in 90% of the animals that she photographed being adopted, returned to their owners, or transferred to another facility. In addition to Kelly's commendable work for the city, she and her husband generously donate their time in support of their Dos Velas Images project, "A Picture is Worth a Thousand Lives." This program, funded through donations, allows for the continued photographing of animals with no charge to shelters. On behalf of the City Council, City Management, and the Animal Services Division, and the residents and pet owners you tirelessly serve, we are pleased to present to Kelly this well-deserved honor of Volunteer of the Year for 2016. Kelly faced equally laudable competition in pursuit of this year's honor. Frank Garcia, Parks and Community Services. Frank has been teaching the guitar class at the Moreno Valley Senior Center since March 2008 and has seen his class grow from a couple students to averaging 15 or more. Frank continues to give his time every Thursday and has accumulated over 800 hours and has taught over 6,000 seniors. Our Emergency Response Force Fire Department. The Emergency Response Force is a group of volunteers under the Fire Department comprised of members of the community with backgrounds from various walks of life, including first aid, disaster preparedness, and logistics. The members provide support to public safety personnel and are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to all manner of emergencies and disasters. Milton Adams Fire Department has been a member of the city's Emergency Response Force since 2013. Milt is enthusiastic, organized, and is a natural leader who makes himself available on short notice to assist in response and other city-community activities, including Hikes to the Top, Ride Movel, and the Fourth of July Parade and festivities. Linda Davis has served as a volunteer with the Code and Neighborhood Services Program since its reinception in the summer of 2015. Linda is one of the city's most active members of its volunteer team, often working two to three days during the week. Linda's service differs from some of other volunteers as she so dedicates her time volunteering both in the field and in the office. Congratulations to your fellow nominees and to Kelly as Volunteer of the Year. Your service and continued dedication are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna get... So we have some certificates of recognition. Frank Garcia, if you could come and say a few words to our audience? Come on.
Good evening. My name is Frank, and I'd like to read something that I wrote in 2013. Guitar instructor at Senior Center. My name is Frank Garcia. I am a guitarist instructor. I started in 2028-08 and still give me guitar lessons. I started playing guitar at the age of 14, 1958. I wanted to be a rock star, and that came true. I don't read music. I give music by chords. My students love the way I teach. My love for music is playing my guitar and giving guitar lessons to whoever wants to learn. At the age of... This was 2003, and now I'm 73. I am 69. That's when I wrote this. Years old, as long as I live, I'll give guitar lessons the day I die to whoever wants to learn. Thank you, Frank Garcia. Oh, by the way, I got this last month at the Senior Center, and this one here was given to me, imagine, 2009. That was the only two that I've given, and I thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and you are our star at the Senior Center. Maybe you didn't become a rock star, but you're our star. Okay, next up is Linda Davis. If you can come up, here's your certificate, and please say some words.
Thank you. Woo-hoo. Well, I was... I'm honored and humbled for this recognition. The time that I do devote to the City of Moreno Valley, it comes from my heart. That's... I'm just dedicated, you know? I've worked so many years, and now this doesn't feel like work, you know? I'm honored and thankful. I have very good supervisors and people that I work with, all my coworkers. I like knowing people by name, and, you know, I just get such a good rapport inside and out, you know? Even with the community that we're out there assisting, you know? They ask for help, and we take the time to answer their questions, and so I feel that that's important. And again, thank you for this recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. The city couldn't do all we do without you. Thank you so much for everything you do. The next certificate of recognition will be for the Emergency Response Force Lead, Emergency Response Force, and the Office of Emergency Management, Moreno Valley Fire Department, and this will be presented to Mr. Milton Adams.
First and foremost, I was kind of shocked by all this, and I want to thank everybody involved for my select, even consideration of being with these folks. I've been with the City Emergency Response Force since, like I said, 2013, and I came to be able to give back to my community. I'm an Air Force veteran, 25 years of military service, and I came to Moreno Valley in 1993. And then in 2007, I started volunteering with the city's volunteer police force, and I've got over around 8,000 hours or more with them. And then in 2013, I saw a need with Emergency Response Force, and I immediately joined them and got involved, and one thing led to another, and I've been able to, I think, help out quite a bit. But it's... I'm overwhelmed by this honor to me, which I never saw it coming, and I want to thank everybody again for even considering me with these people who have done so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and it's volunteers that make up our city, and there's a lot to do. So if you find a need that you have spare time, look us up, because there's a lot of spaces to be filled. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say that, Mr. Mayor, your mom was one of my students.
Awesome.
Year, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Moreno Valley Animal Services offers a wide range of services, including dog licensee, low-cost spay and neuter programs, and vaccination services that benefit the entire community; and whereas Kelly Vella has been an integral part of the Animal Services Team volunteering as a shelter photographer for more than three years; and whereas the dedication, excitement, and professionalism Kelly Vella continually demonstrates and brings to the city's animal shelter serve as notable models of the effort put forth by city volunteers; and whereas Kelly Vella's commitment to capturing the best pictures of the adoptable animals has resulted in 90% of the animals that had professional photographs taken, being adopted, returned to their owners, rescued by nonprofit 501(c)(3) partners, or transferred to another facility. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its residents and staff, does hereby recognize Kelly Vella for her dedication to Moreno Valley Animal Services and congratulates her as a 2016 Volunteer of the Year. So let's give her a big hand. Steve, can you come up? Steve Fries? Come on up. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture with you. Come on up here. And Ms. Vella will have some words, and she'll introduce her guest.
I'm very honored to be noticed. Thank you, Moreno Valley Animal Shelter. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody. I'm very honored. I love what I do, and this is the best job ever. Thank you very much.
It's been an honor having Kelly and her husband help us at the facility. I think the number actually this year has gone up a little bit. I think it's closer to 96% of the animals that are professionally photographed or have a positive outcome. So it's a great benefit to the community's pets because it offers them an opportunity for a second chance, and it's really been a morale booster for our staff. It brings people together. In fact, she's actually photographed some of our staff with the animals, and they've had a lot of fun with that. So it's been a wonderful opportunity to have her as part of our volunteer crew, and actually we see her as part of our family over at Animal Services, so we're glad to have her on board, and we look forward to many more years of animal photography at the animal shelter. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
The big one is... She's got it all in two minutes.
I also would like to recognize the assistant principal that's at the school at Armada Elementary, Vivian Chang. If you could please stand up and be recognized. She actually also came to the aid of Mrs. Godino. So thank you so much, Vivian.
So much courage in the room. Congratulations and thank you for a job well done. The second presentation will be for Volunteer of the Year, Kelly Vella and nominees. If you can please come up. I have Frank Garcia, Milton Adams, Linda Davis, and the Emergency Response Force within the Fire Department. If you could please come up. I have... Frank Garcia, Milton Adams, Linda Davis, and the Emergency Response Force within the Fire Department. If you could please come up. I have... Frank Garcia, Milton Adams, Linda Davis, and the Emergency Response Force within the Fire Department. If you could please come up. I have... Kelly Vella has been a part of the city's animal services team volunteering as a shelter photographer for over three years. The commitment and the excitement Kelly brings to the animal shelter are constantly on display with the obvious passion she has for the animals in the shelter. Nominated for the second straight year, Kelly has distinguished herself from her fellow nominees in both her continued and sustained commitment and her personal touch. Kelly's capturing of the best pictures of the animals has resulted in 90% of the animals that had professional photographs taken, being adopted, returned to their owners, rescued by nonprofit 501(c)(3) partners, or transferred to another facility. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its residents and staff, does hereby recognize Kelly Vella for her dedication to Moreno Valley Animal Services and congratulates her as a 2016 Volunteer of the Year. So let's give her a big hand. Steve, can you come up? Steve Fries? Come on up. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture with you. Come on up here. And Ms. Vella will have some words, and she'll introduce her guest.
I'm very honored to be noticed. Thank you, Moreno Valley Animal Shelter. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody. I'm very honored. I love what I do, and this is the best job ever. Thank you very much.
It's been an honor having Kelly and her husband help us at the facility. I think the number actually this year has gone up a little bit. I think it's closer to 96% of the animals that are professionally photographed or have a positive outcome. So it's a great benefit to the community's pets because it offers them an opportunity for a second chance, and it's really been a morale booster for our staff. It brings people together. In fact, she's actually photographed some of our staff with the animals, and they've had a lot of fun with that. So it's been a wonderful opportunity to have her as part of our volunteer crew, and actually we see her as part of our family over at Animal Services, so we're glad to have her on board, and we look forward to many more years of animal photography at the animal shelter. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
The big one is... She's got it all in two minutes.
Can I put one behind the other?
Yeah.
What, can you?
That's a little more easy.
You ranked. I'm sorry.
I have to prom.
You just asked. And you want one of those up here, please?
Do you remember last time we were booping around and taking this? I said, "I want a zangardan." They gave me one. I had it on my desk last week. It's this big, a little raked.
We can turn it just right here.
Wow, nice. I'll just sit on that. You're not Bill. That's Bill.
No. You're welcome to sit on it.
No, I'm just kidding. If we can get him up here.
Okay, we're back. Our third presentation will be the West Coast Thunder Proclamation, and the proclamation will be presented to Bill Chamberlain, President of the Board for West Coast Thunder, and Sharon Bridges, Executive Director of West Coast Thunder. And we will also be presenting a proclamation to Bill Chamberlain for his community service and involvement in various charitable organizations. The first proclamation is recognizing West Coast Thunder Annual Memorial Day Bike Run. West Coast Thunder has been a major contributor of funds to the Riverside National Cemetery through its Support Committee. Their financial gifts to Riverside National Cemetery support committees over the past 18 years, have funded each July Concert for Heroes and Cemetery projects such as the Memorial Honor Detail, the National Pao Mie Memorial, and provide services for indigenous and unaccompanied homeless veterans buried each month. Considering Moreno Valley's military heritage upwards of over 7,500 motorcyclist parade participants will significantly enhance the events of the day for Moreno Valley residents. Moreno Valley is proud to join West Coast Thunder in honoring our true American heroes. On behalf of the City Council and the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present this proclamation to West Coast Thunder President Bill Chamberlain and Executive Director Sharon Shannon Bridges. Congratulations. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas West Coast Thunder began its legacy in May of 1999 with eight friends on a small motorcycle ride to honor United States veterans at Riverside National Cemetery; and whereas in 2000, West Coast Thunder Corporation was founded by Pat Delahunti, Steve Cefeli, Steve Aragon, George Helton, Lucky and Teresa Delany, Rich Greenberg, and DJ Quinn. And whereas West Coast Thunder Memorial Day Bike Run is an annual remembrance parade and fundraising event benefiting the Riverside National Cemetery; and whereas West Coast Thunder has donated more than $800,000 to the Riverside National Cemetery Support Committee. Funding construction of the National Pao Mie Memorial dedicated in 2005, repairs to the National Congressional Medal of Honor Memorial, supported the Riverside National Cemetery Memorial Honor Detail with a donation of flower cones, flowers, and American flags to honor the indigent and unaccompanied or homeless veterans laid to rest, portable shelters for the Medal of Honor recipients buried at the Riverside National Cemetery, four electric golf carts, and repaired the fountains in the cemetery that provide the filtering system for the lakes, enhancing the aesthetic value of the majestic grounds. And whereas the West Coast Thunder Parade Route changed in 2013 to include Moreno Valley along Sunnymead Boulevard as a rider's travel from Riverside, past Riverside National Cemetery, to Saboba Casino's outdoor arena for a closing tribute concert; and whereas the West Coast Thunder Parade attracts more than 7,500 riders and is the largest bike-supported single-day Memorial Day event west of the Mississippi River. And whereas the West Coast Thunder Parade provides a meaningful activity for citizens to honor veterans. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, hereby recognizes the honorable efforts by West Coast Thunder and encourages all citizens to enjoy the 18th Annual West Coast Thunder Memorial Day Bike Run and Parade. Thank you. Our next proclamation is presented to Bill Chamberlain. Organizations such as West Coast Thunder are made driven by the people who dedicate their time and effort to the service of others. It is my great honor to recognize one such person this evening. Bill Chamberlain knows the meaning of selfless service, and he lives it. Bill was an active-duty soldier in the United States Army from 1966 until 1968, and he served in the Vietnam War. Following his military service, Bill began volunteering with Big Brothers of America. His passion for improving opportunities for children has been continuously proven for more than 40 years of mentoring, coordinating youth projects, and helping to raise money for schools. Bill has been actively involved with many other organizations. Most notably, he spends his time working for the Betterment of Veterans. He works tirelessly with groups dedicated to honoring veterans such as Patriot Guard Riders, Veterans Honoring Veterans, and not least of all, West Coast Thunder, as a president of the Thunder Board. These groups serve the community by assisting family members of fallen heroes, helping to meet the needs of veterans, and ensuring that the fallen heroes who have no family will not be forgotten. It is rare to meet somebody who not only sees the goodness in people, but also strives to bring out the best in others. It is with heartfelt gratitude that, on behalf of the City Council, I present you with this proclamation to recognize your invaluable service to our community. Organizations such as West Coast Thunder are made, driven by the people who dedicate their time and effort to the service of others. It is my great honor to recognize one such person this evening. Bill Chamberlain knows the meaning of selfless service and he lives it. Bill was an active-duty soldier in the United States Army from nineteen sixty-six until nineteen sixty-eight, and he served in the Vietnam War. Following his military service, Bill began volunteering with Big Brothers of America. His passion for improving opportunities for children has been continuously proven for more than forty years of mentoring, coordinating youth projects and helping to raise money for schools. Bill has been actively involved with many other organizations. Most notably, he spends his time working for the Better Men of Veterans. He works tirelessly with groups dedicated to honoring veterans, such as Patriot Guard Riders, Veterans Honoring Veterans, and not least of all, West Coast Thunder, as a president of the Thunder Board. These groups serve the community by assisting family members of fallen heroes, helping to meet the needs of veterans and ensuring that the fallen heroes, who have no family, will not be forgotten. It is rare to meet somebody who not only sees the goodness in people, but also strives to bring out the best in others. It is with heartfelt gratitude that, on behalf of the City Council, I present you with this proclamation to recognize your invaluable service to our community. Wow. So I'm gonna read the proclamation, because we're so proud of you, Bill. So bear with me. Whereas there is an undeniable need for investment in the lives of youth and veterans. And whereas Bill Chamberlain has worked tirelessly mentoring at-risk youth through Big Brothers of America and has further demonstrated an unparalleled devotion to the overall well-being of the youth in his community through the coordination of youth projects for the Interac Organization, of the Rotary Club of Riverside. And whereas Bill Chamberlain is a veteran of the Vietnam War, through his public service, he continually exemplifies the soldier's creed. I will never leave a fallen comrade. And whereas Bill Chamberlain has maintained the army values of loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity and personal courage by serving on numerous boards of directors committed to honoring fallen heroes, and enhancing the quality of life for veterans and the community at large. And whereas through his efforts, Bill Chamberlain has improved the lives of countless people, from disenfranchised youth to surviving veterans, to family members of fallen heroes, and perhaps most importantly, fallen heroes who have no one to claim them. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize Bill Chamberlain for his unwavering service to the youth and veterans in the inland region. Thank you, Bill. And you have the microphone and you can tell us what you have here.
Well, thank you all for this recognition. It was a surprise I just found out about, but I'm really here for West Coast Thunder. West Coast Thunder has been a passion for me, not just because I'm a veteran, just because of what the people at the cemetery have done for this country. Jim and I are both veterans, and the reason we ride and the reason we do West Coast Thunder is to raise the money for the cemetery, just to honor and, and, and keep the, the tradition alive of supporting the veterans that are buried there because of what they did for our country. It's important to us to keep that tradition alive and we really appreciate what Moreno Valley does for us as we ride through. Your, your neighbors and your friends are out there waving us on and waving flags and it means a lot to all of us. And I would say that at least fifty percent of the riders, if not more, are veterans. And you see these big burly bikers riding through with tears streaming down their eyes when they're watching people wave flags and salute them. So, thank you Moreno Valley for all you do.
Thank you and congratulations.
Bill, one more thing, I don't think the people know about this. We go back to two thousand and two and you also worked for Riverside Against Drugs tirelessly, raising money for the kids at the school when I was at Alford. And that wasn't on there, so I thought I'd share that with the public too. And you are tireless, I've tried to work beside you all those years and you're hard to do that with. God bless you, buddy.
Thank you so much, and it's a beautiful bike. The fourth presentation will be National Poetry Month. Councilmember Marquez will be presenting a proclamation to the members of the Arts and Library Commissions.
Okay. Can I have Debbie Johnson, is she here? Christopher Johnson? And James Harris? Can you come up here, please? On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to thank the Arts Commission for bringing forth the proclamation, re-recognizing National Poetry Month. Accepting this proclamation will be Arts Chairman Debbie Johnson, Team Commission Christopher Johnson, and James Harris from the Library Commission. National Poetry Month promotes enjoyment, discovery and sharing of poetry. And it celebrates to increase awareness and appreciation of poetry in the United States. It is the largest celebration in the world marking poetry important places in our culture and our lives. It is my pleasure now to present the following proclamation. As where in nineteen ninety-six, the Academy of American Poetry established the month of April as National Poetry Month. And as, whereas National Poetry Month is one of the largest celebrations in the world, whereas poetry is an essential part of the arts and humanities, affects various aspects of life in the United States today, including education, the economy, commis-, uh, community, pride and development. And whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in, such as music, theater, film, dance and virtual arts. And whereas the City of Moreno Valley celebrates the beauty of language and the vistas of imagination poetry creates and the acknowledgement, the importance of poetry and the education as we see it today. Whereas the City of Moreno Valley takes pride in the diversity, talent, poetry and, whereas enjoyment of poetry should be encouraged. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of the citizens and staff, hereby proclaim April twentieth, April twenty seventeen, as National Poetry Month and will call upon public officials, educators, librarians and all, and all in Moreno Valley to observe National Poetry Month, to celebrate the cultures, riches, the community has to offer and to recognize the importance and the roles, important roles, poetry has in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs.
On behalf of the Arts Commission, I want to thank the city for everything they do to support the arts. And as a poet, I'm personally excited to see the proclamation, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Library Commission, we're really pleased to be a part of this proclamation. And we're looking forward to the future endeavors, working with the city, as with the Arts Commission. We're really excited at the library and we know that the library is in great hands and we really just want to just be, express our profound thanks to the city. And the library has a great future, thank you.
As well, on behalf of the Arts Commission, I am very excited to see this proclamation put in.
Again, I want to thank everybody for your participation.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. The fifth and final presentation will be the National Public Works Week proclamation. Mayor Gutierrez will present a proclamation to the National Public Works Week to Ahmad Ansari, our Public Works Director, and to the Public Works Department staff.
Just making sure the, the main proclamation is here. But, so on behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank our Public Works Director and City Engineer Ahmad Ansari, along with our entire Public Works Department and staff for bringing forth the proclamation recognizing two thousand and seventeen National Public Works Week during the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seven. So if I could have them all come up here, or Ahmad and whoever else is here? Oh, a lot, okay. And once again, let's give an applause to our Public Works Department for all being here. You know, our Public Works Department does a lot of work for our city and sometimes we, we take things for granted, you know, sometimes our roads, our bridges and some of the customer service. And so I just want to say, on behalf of the City Council, you know, thank you so much for all, what you do, especially, you know, for responding to residents' concerns efficiently and quickly. I know that you have that one-day response?
Same-day response.
Oh, same-day response. Same-day response program. And so really, within the same day, they try to respond, at least to let you know that they're working on an issue. So I'd like to read this proclamation. It says, whereas the services provided by Public Works in our community are an integral part of the lives of our Moreno Valley citizens every day. And whereas the support of and understanding informed citizenry, citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as storm drains, streets, highways, traffic signals, transportation, public buildings, lighting and landscaping and solid waste collections. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities, programs and services to be here. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, like those that are here today. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Department is influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff here tonight, hereby proclaims the week of May twenty-first to May twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen, as National Public Works Week. Let's give them another round of applause. And then I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, if you would like to say a few words on behalf of your department?
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of City Council for this, for this proclamation. I received this proclamation on behalf of every single man and woman working in Public Works Department. As you know, Public Works Department is the largest non-safety, non-public safety city department, approximately one hundred and twenty-six employees. And through the five divisions, they've accomplished a lot since last year that, that we were honored with this proclamation. National Public Works Week is designated by the American Public Works Association, fourth week of May. And then so through that event, we have employee recognition. We also have that week as open house, you know, for the members of the public to show up at any of the Public Works divisions, including maintenance and operation and get information about our operation and how we, how we do our work and, and meet staff and everything else. So on behalf of staff, I thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, thank you so much.
Thank you so much to our Public Works Department and thank you for everything you do. It's a great staff we have and that's why we get things done, because we have an excellent staff. That concludes our special presentations portion and our City Council meeting will convene at six o'clock PM. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome tonight to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on May sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, at six oh three PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Sherri Rhodes from the local spiritual assembly of Bahays, Bahais, Bahais of Moreno Valley.
Everyone stand, please face the flag, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Frank?
Thank you inviting, for inviting us to the Bahais of Moreno Valley to say the invocation. Let's say a prayer for America. O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to appraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal.
Thank you so much. Sherri Rhodes, thank you. Council roll call, please?
Councilmember Gaiba?
Here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Ahmad Ansari, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Abdul Ahmed Farji.
Betsy Adams, Parks and Community Services.
Ellen Brock, Community Development Director.
Thank you to the staff. City Attorney, we do have, I believe you have a special guest that you would like to introduce?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. It's with pleasure that I introduce Darren Ziegler. He is the new Deputy City Attorney. He was the successful candidate out of a pool of 38, a very competitive recruitment process. He comes to us from the East Coast. He's a graduate of Virginia Tech University and William and Mary Law School. We were lucky enough to steal him away from the San Diego City Attorney's Office. I'd like you to welcome and introduce Darren Ziegler.
Darren, would you like to say a few words, or?
I just want to say hello, thank you to everybody for the warm welcome. I've received just an unbelievably warm welcome from everybody in Moreno Valley since I've begun last week, and I'm really looking forward to building a long and good relationship with the city.
Great to hear. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone, especially in the audience, to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially when there's individuals speaking at the podium, to remain quiet and to allow them to speak. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting, but we can accomplish more if we're respectful towards each other. Finally, I ask the speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed, again, to the presiding officer or to the City Council. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. If you could please approach the podium once you hear your name called, so that way we can get the meeting going. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Seventeen.
So we'll go ahead and take the seventeen speakers and two minutes per speaker, so that we can allow all the speakers to speak.
Yes, sir. Robert Harris, Dr. Regina L. Brock Mueller, and Jorge Quintero.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Council, staff. I would just like to say, when will Moreno Valley stop embarrassing itself? Pardon me? Just go ahead? Okay, when will Moreno Valley stop embarrassing itself? Wasn't it bad enough that we had Marcelo Coe that was arrested for, and convicted for taking bribes as a City Council member? Wasn't it bad when Mike Rios was arrested for, and convicted of running a prostitution ring as a school board member? Wasn't it bad enough when Ladonna Jepson was discovered to be a twice convicted felon with a history of grand theft, and she became a city council member? Now, here comes Hector Diaz, another convicted criminal who wants to represent us. Hector Diaz wants people to think that his actions were in self-defense, but that is not true. His actions, if his actions were in self-defense, he would have had been charged. He, I'm sorry, if, if his, if his actions were in self-defense, he would not have been charged, but the other person would have been charged. The court records show that the other man was never charged. In fact, the court required Hector Diaz to pay him restitution for pain and suffering and all of his medical bills. When he arrived at the hospital, he had to have his head sutured, and also, he had to have his, his brain scanned to make, to check for bleeding. That doesn't sound like self-defense to me. That sounds like something that could have been actually, maybe even attempted murder. Am I?
Yeah, thank you, Robert.
That's two minutes?
Yes.
Wow, that went really fast. Okay, thanks.
Next speaker, Dr. Regina.
I'm here to be upset about the way that we need an ethics committee before we even get started. We need, we, I got up there and said, "Lorena Jepson, I would recuse myself," but she didn't. And today, I'm going to sit there and say, "Hector Diaz, you don't even need to be a member of our committee, our favorite country, our favorite city. It's a pathetic thing that we need to get involved." But we do. Before any member wants to be a council member, have them go through an ethics committee and have them cleared before we are going to elect the possible committee of that particular council members. We need very clear, of a clear record, 100%, no felons, no crimes, or misdemeanors like a ticket. I mean, that could be a DUI, but I don't want to see a felon. And there's been felons. Coe, Rios, and Jepson. Ridiculous. And we elected these people to be our council members? If I would have gone against you, Mayor Gutierrez, in your council, I might have won. I'm a little too old, but I could have won. Rest assured, we could have gone head to toe, and someone would have won, and someone would have lost, but fair fighting, not this nonsense of committee members and elections. Let's get that straight. We need our committee to find out what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. And then we have Jorge.
Jorge Quintero, Davina Sanchez, and Santiago Hernandez.
Okay, and then Jorge brought his own translator tonight. So I hope you don't, you know, your feelings aren't hurt. I know, sorry. Okay, he's going to send us a bill. Nah, just play. Oh, wait, hold on, Jorge, one second. Yeah, un momento.
Check. Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez. Mayor Pro Tem, Victoria Bacca. Mr. Gaiba, and Mr. Marquez. It's an embarrassment that this keeps happening in our city. We've already had the bad experience with Ladonna Jepson. And now we have Hector Diaz trying to run for council when his moral compass is completely off. It's sad for our city that this keeps happening. The city should create a committee that is going to filter these candidates before they run. They should also be able to pass a psychological exam. With all due respect, Mr. Gaiba, it's embarrassing how some council members act towards the public. Because during one of the meetings, he got up and walked out without no explanations. As a resident, I find that very disturbing, because he's not even willing to keep an open dialogue to exchange ideas. He does not represent the attitude or the temperament to, for what it takes to be a council member. It's unfortunate that we have to even consider a person that's a delinquent for a position as honorable as a city council member. And I will repeat again, please consider forming the committee, because it's embarrassing to residents to keep with this issue. I hope that the community is hearing what I'm saying and does not vote for that man who is a criminal. Thank you.
Three speakers?
Davina Sanchez, Santiago Hernandez, Frank Wright.
Hi, Davina.
Hello to all members of. My name is Danira Sanchez, and I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for many years, and I'm here to express my concern about the new council member for District Four. We do not want any council member. We want an honest and sincere person with no criminal record. We do not want the same thing to happen that happened to us previously. People who are running really need to be investigated well for criminal records. I recommend that you not make the same mistake. We need to know that they are good leaders and administrators for our city. Be ready to work harder and to place the city of Moreno Valley on high. Thank you.
Thank you, Davina. And next speaker, Santiago. Followed by Frank. Right, is it Frank?
Good evening, staff, people in their homes and here, and our governors, councils, and the law enforcement. Thank you. My question is, we are the third city in the whole nation with wealth economics. Am I right or not?
Keep, keep going, Santiago.
We, the people of Moreno Valley, deserve a better person who'd sit and govern us. We need to do what McDonald's does. When you apply for employment, they check your criminal record. Why? Because the company, if it's a bad apple in their company, every apple's going to be bad sooner or later. So the, the, the company's going to look bad, and the owners don't want it. So we, as citizens, as the owner and residents of this city, we don't want that. We don't want a criminal.
Thank you, Santiago.
Guy who worked for us, okay? Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Who are the other three speakers, Madam Clerk?
Roy Plecker, Leonardo Gonzalez, Martin Cabrera.
Mayor and Councilman, it is imperative that the caliber of Ulysses Cabrera be appointed for the position on the City Council. Mr. Cabrera is well-educated, with proper background in communication, and with a young group, especially teenagers, and all groups concerned. By the initiative of the City Hall, he is, with his, with his youth, is inspiring for the education of higher school graduates and to finish to be equipped for good jobs and positions. He is an excellent speaker, with encouragement and the anticipation for the benefit of the people, to bring families. He is a benefit motivator for jobs to increase the standards of life, living conditions throughout the city, and also of concern for the streets and safety conditions, and his concern for the city living conditions. It is imperative, and also being said, Mr. Cabrera has a clean record. He's young, ambitious, and that's the kind of caliber of man we need in this city. And because of his clean record, we don't need the competition of anyone who has a bad record. And let's put all away what has happened before. Cole and the others that downgraded this city, we don't need that anymore. We need the best, and we're counting on you, the best, to make the best decisions. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker, please. Roy? Good evening, Roy.
Wasn't even going to come here tonight. Are we down to one minute?
No, it's the technical thing.
Well, the, but I posted a story on Moreno Valley Matters, and you should whip out your cellphones, look on the front page, right on the top. There's a 2017 Honda with no wheels and tires. I posted on there, we, the Moreno Valley City Council has cut police personnel specifically a forensic tech, which does fingerprints and all the specialty stuff that does that sort of thing, that prevents those crimes, or helps put people that do that in jail eventually. They're gone. I see that as a problem, because public safety should be your number-one concern, as the California State Constitution says. We should be looking to this and not be cutting our public safety personnel, because this will continue to go, as it has, if it does, if it's allowed to continue, our city will still be dwindling down the drain. And we can elect candidates, all we want, but if this is not going to change, we're going to still be in trouble. And we should be focusing, I believe, on the school district in the city, because that's the number-one determinant of the quality of life in your city. Bottom line, and we do not have a good one. And you've seen the emails of the stuff, and I get challenged a lot. I get challenged from this body, and I get challenged from the school district. But I put out this, I put out what I believe to be the statistics that I see of the day and how I see it, and I do not get statistics back that says, "I am wrong." So where does that leave us? We should be looking with Measure M, all that, with what's been told on the fifth high school. There's a lot of things going on in the city that need to be corrected, and we need people to stand up, our leaders to stand up, and take the corrective action that's going to put this city back on the right path.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker, please. The next three speakers.
Leonardo Gonzalez, Martin Cabrera, Laura Banks.
So, was it Leo, the first one? Okay, Leo?
Good evening, council staff. Hello? Okay, good. So, first of all, I want to congratulate the new Deputy City Attorney. Was it Daryl? Is that his name, Daryl?
Darren.
Oh, Darren, yeah, congratulations to him. Seems like he'll be a good addition to the city. So, two things, two completely different subjects. First of all, I would want to know what somebody, what a resident would have to do, or a group of residents would have to do in the city to get speed bumps. So that's the first one. A lot of residents in the city, I've heard, have been dealing with issues regarding speeding in residential neighborhoods. So, somebody can direct me towards that after, that'd be great. The second one is this ongoing issue of having candidates that think they have the backgrounds to run, when in reality, they really don't. In the case of Mr. Hector Diaz, that being another one, you know, and things happen. You know, I'm the first to say, things do happen. There's always two sides. You know, I'm the first to say, things do happen. Uh, there's always two sides to every story. And we heard, you know, Mrs. Jemson's side to the story. We heard all the past people who have held public office. We've, we've heard their side of the story, but the facts speak for themselves. You know, the facts are completely different from the stories that they told us and we've repeatedly heard from Mr. Hector Diaz that, you know, it was in self-defense, that it was somebody that he kicked out of the restaurant, so on and so forth. But that's to the issue of the assault. That's not, you know, he could still say, "Well, I'm still an ethical guy who was in self-defense." I did find a little something here and I'd like to read it. It was actually, uh, the summary of the declaration and I want to read a little snippet from, uh, the judge from this case himself. Uh, there's a file number. I'm not gonna repeat it, but if you want it, uh, as far as reference, it's right here for you to, uh, to, to see. Uh, this is, uh, directly from the judge himself. Were asked, "The facts alleged above which resulted in the revocation of the respondent's license to act as a real estate..." Oh, is it over already? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
Next one is Martin.
Martin Cabrera, followed by Laura Banks and Scott Heatheran.
Good evening.
Good evening Martin.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me here, the opportunity of having, supporting my son, Ulysses Cabrera. Keep that in mind, I'm not talking about, like his father. I'm talking about a citizen, alright? And the, the Ulysses team has shown already a lot. They've been working a lot with the community, showing that they can change things, alright? So they're a hard team, hard worker team, alright? They showing it already, energetic. And they're working with their heart. They giving themselves to the community already, alright? So I'm supporting him. Once again, not, not like his father. He's not being raised spoiled. He's been raised hard worker and he's been doing himself since a teenager, showing good behavior and good moral ethics. That's what we need in the community, alright? So keep that in mind and look forward all joining him for getting that Moreno Valley city as a top city, alright? Economic growing, education is basic. Education, they working for education. No community with education is going nowhere, alright? So keep that in mind, the good things that they're doing for the community. So thank you so much.
Next speaker Laura. Good evening Laura.
Hello, uh, council. Thank you. Um, so I, uh, just have a couple of points tonight. Just wanna say that, um, congratulations to, um, Commissioner Baker. He did get a, um, great endorsement from the PE News, so I just didn't know if anybody was aware of that. Um, one of the best, um, backings that I've ever heard given to a candidate from the, from the newspaper, so, um, congratulations to him. I am, um, on his team, as you can tell, um, as you've seen, but not because of just him. He has been in this community for several years, ten years plus, um, working as a volunteer, as a commissioner. It is not a paid, um, uh, office, um, as well as just, he, he encompasses what a volunteer should be and that's bringing more volunteers, uh, bringing residents, joining together. And that's how I'm here actually. Because I was one that he did bring and, and my family, um, to really take part in Moreno Valley. I've been here about eight years now and pretty happy now. Um, and to get involved and to get involved with all of you. But, um, there's some other things that have also come up on this road of, uh, this campaign. And I understand there's other things happening with the, um, candidates. One, um, not just to, to point it out, um, or to narrow it to Ulysses Cabrera, but, um, there have been some things that have been coming up. He may have the best intentions, but with youth and with, you know, with maturity also comes wisdom. And, um, already, you know, from his camp, we've already seen where there was a paid staffer that, um, did some terrible things and went along where we and Shaylinda's team were canvassing. And, um, one of his paid staffers, uh, Luis Paul Amaris, um, we have our own video and, um, had miners and they were around going and, um, taking our flyers, crumbling them up.
Hey Laura, thank you.
Anyways, just wanna let everybody know.
Next three speakers please.
Scott Heatheran, Azli Rivera, Jose Peña.
Good evening Moreno Valley. I have no time for niceties. Um, so we'll get straight to it. Yes, we do need an ethics committee, of course we do. We need more civic involvement in the city. You have, you have all these people come up here throwing shade at Hector Diaz. At least Hector Diaz showed up at the two events that were put on by the city. You know, you have the same people comparing Hector Diaz to Marcelo Coe. And that's wrong because the money that was behind Coe, I mean, people, that's why we need an ethics committee. All that needs to be investigated. How did Coe get where he is? There's people that were behind him. Those same people are still putting money into these city elections. That's, that's where the focus needs to be. One minute left?
One, six seconds.
Five seconds left. Nice.
Four seconds.
Oh, good night. Have a good evening.
Good evening Azli. How you doing?
Good evening. Good evening Gaba, good evening Mayor Baca and Marquez. I'm here representing, I'm here representing Ulysses Cabrera. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here together because here we're showing the appreciation for the community. And that's exactly what Ulysses Cabrera is doing for our community. He's getting to know the people all around the community, not just District Four, showing an interest in family members and as wide as possible, right? As, we're trying to reach as many people as possible. And here we're making a difference through our community and I wanted you guys to know that this is just, we're giving a moment for our community to be risen from the ground, right? We all want the best for our community and right now is our chance and that's what I'd like to come up here. We don't need a best friend, we don't need a boss, we need a leader. And that's exactly what we have here with Cabrera. Thank you.
Thank you Azli. Next speaker please. Good evening Jose.
Good evening Mayor. I'm here to represent the city of Moreno Valley and, as well as District Four. And what we need is, we need change and we need someone that's gonna be involved, not just involved in these meetings, but we need someone that's gonna be involved in the schools, in the college, around the programs that we have for the youth and for the people here. We need more cops and we need to fix our roads and we need new libraries. We need more, more programs for the city to better the city. And the person that we have who's gonna do that and who's gonna work towards that and work towards the youth and the schools and the people is Ulysses Cabrera. And that's who we need, everyone to vote for June 6th. We need everyone's vote, June 6th, so we can improve the school, so we can improve our roads, get more jobs in Moreno Valley, get our economy to grow. We need to turn Moreno Valley into a bigger city and it has the potential and it has the people for the change. And that change is Ulysses Cabrera. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Jose. And next three speakers.
Ulysses Cabrera, Norwan Ashan, Rafael Burgueras and Tom Gerard.
Gerald?
Gerald Senior.
Ulysses?
Good evening everyone. Evening council, evening mayor, city staff and Moreno Valley residents. Uh, my name is Ulysses Cabrera. Uh, you've probably seen me here before and, uh, I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone here who's, uh, out here supporting me and, uh, just giving me more motivation and giving me more energy because, uh, they're, they're comprised of my family and friends and volunteers who are out here working hard because they believe in the message that we're sending out. And so we want to keep that momentum going. We can't stop. We're in a very good position and we have the opportunity to make that continue. And so that's why I'm running for District Four. That's why I'm running for city council. And I'm out there every single day walking and talking and meeting residents and I know what the city needs. I know what District Four needs and I'm here to answer that call. And so I just hope that on June 6th, everyone will vote Cabrera at your polling places. You know, I'm here to serve and I'm very accessible, so anything, feel free to reach out to me, uh, anything at all. I'm just a phone call away. Thank you.
I think it was Rafael and then Tom? Or was there someone else?
One, Norwan.
Norwan? It's Mr. Norwan here? Okay, alright. Oh wait. Okay, what, what was the last name on it?
It's hard to decipher the writing.
Can you just spell?
It's N-O-R.
Okay, that's you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Nice to meet you and everyone else in the, in the room. I've been here, uh, twenty-eight years as a resident of Moreno Valley. I, I love this city and I have been a volunteer of this city for quite a while now. I was volunteering at Badger Middle School in the program called Watch Dogs. Dog stands for Dads of Great Students. It was a very enlightening thing because I always thought volunteering was something, like I've worked all my life and I thought volunteering was, no, no, I can't volunteer, but I've really enjoyed it. But I was able to meet someone who's been a volunteer that I didn't know he was a volunteer and that's Commissioner Baker. I've worked alongside him on several projects and, um, I worked with him on the, uh, the, uh, the float, the Christmas Day float. It was called Liberty, Liberty One, Liberty Two, which came in first place. And as knowing this man, I just see the energy he has for this city and I just couldn't understand how, I, I, I thought, I didn't know he was a volunteer, the way he worked and the way he dedicated himself to the city. He loves this city, just like I love this city. So I would just like to say the, the words that I put just now toward him. And, uh, I'd like to thank the police officers for their hard work, for what they do. They have a challenge each and every day. So that's about what I have to say and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Evening Rafael.
Good evening Mayor, council members, staff and guests.
One second Rafael. Okay, go ahead.
Volunteers that work on the campaign for, um, Ulysses Cabrera, we do not get paid. That's not true. We do that out of our hearts and we swear and we work hard for him. We do not get paid. The second thing that Scott mentioned about money, everybody gives to campaigns. I give, I gave a thousand dollars to his campaign because he had the right message and that's what I supported, was the right message. Now, Hector Diaz, I get residents in District Four that talk about Hector Diaz. Not the, not the flyer that went out to tell him about his crime, but the letter that he sent out to look for sympathy on the crime he did. He actually said on his own flyer that he did it in self-defense. But that's not true because the district attorney of the county of Riverside found him guilty, gave him two months, an ankle bracelet, and right now he's on probation. Right now. If he got elected tomorrow or this Tuesday, he will be your council member with a conviction on his record, a crime of beating a man with a baton and giving him nine stitches. He could have killed that man. So he's asking the District Four to have sympathy for him. No, we don't need men or women on the council with those kind of records. We should have better people up there. We have other choices. There are three other candidates running. District Four, you can find somebody better than Hector Diaz. Don't allow his sympathy to fool you. We don't need people like that on the council. We don't need to be laughed at any longer. This city had enough problems throughout the years with the Rico and everything. It's ridiculous.
Next speaker please. Next three speakers.
Tom.
Gerald.
Sandra Murphy.
And that.
That's it.
Good evening Tom.
Evening Mayor Gutierrez and Mayor Potam Baca, council members, members of staff and the public, both in their chambers and watching all. You know, the first thing we need to do is, we have our techies here, fix this thing so if we change the time limit, it follows. It makes it a challenge, but I'm sure they can do it between meetings at some point. But I want to follow on this, uh, issue of, uh, city image because it's haunted us forever. And, uh, in that debate that I went to about a month ago, all the candidates, "Oh, want this, want more police, want nice restaurants, want nice stores," uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the reality is, uh, you know, we don't have the jobs here. We don't have the income level and we don't have a tax base. And one of the biggest culprit in all this has been the press enterprise. You know, I got, oddly enough, just through sheer dumb luck, I ran into three people who've been there a while. I've been in the city since, uh, living here, thirty-six years this June. And, uh, that paper has just bashed us so cleverly, very subliminally, but very snidely. And they have not helped this community, have not helped its image. And just compare our property values with other areas. And I think it relates to our school performance. So I, you know, it was odd that that came up and it's been an issue for a long time, kind of went underground, but it's something that needs to be addressed. And I hope whoever fills that seat and holds me as council, it's something we need to, uh, take a cogent effort to get fixed because it's, it's really, uh, pulled away from the value of this community. So that was my primary, uh, issue that I wanted to share and I thank you for giving me time.
Okay, thank you Tom. Next speaker is Sandra Murphy. Good evening Sandra.
Hola buenas noches.
Oh, okay.
Hoy traigo un intérprete.
Yeah.
Mi nombre es Sandra Murphy.
My name is Sandra.
Hablaremos de éticas.
And we need to talk about ethics.
Si alguien está corriendo para un puesto...
If someone is running for a position, thank you.
Verdaderamente deben de ser unas personas que están calificadas.
They truly need to be people who are qualified?
No nomás que están calificadas, que tienen la intención de ayudar.
Not only qualified, but that they have every intention to help?
Componer a la ciudad, ayudar a la ciudad.
Fixing the city, helping out the city?
Traer proyectos nuevos.
Bringing new projects?
Pero sobre todo, que quieran a la comunidad.
But overall things, that they truly love the community.
Una de las cosas en este oficina...
One of the things that, here in this office...
Nosotros hacemos decisiones que las hacemos pensando en Dios.
You know, we make decisions that, we keep God in mind.
Okay. Cuando una persona no está diciendo la verdad...
When someone is not speaking the truth.
No es la persona adecuada.
That person obviously is not qualified.
Una de las cosas más grandes que el ser humano necesita.
One of the greatest things that mankind needs.
Es verdad.
Is truth.
Amor.
Love.
Esperanza.
Hope.
Y conocimiento de la necesidad de las demás personas.
And acknowledgement of the needs of others.
No nomás de la necesidad personal.
Not just the personal issues.
No nomás el deseo de ser famoso.
The personal need or just the will to want to be famous.
Estas posiciones en la ciudad y en cualquier departamento del gobierno.
These positions in the city and any other position found in the government.
Tienen que tener lo mejor que el ser humano puede dar.
They always have to be giving their best to mankind.
Y en esta pequeña ciudad.
And in this small city.
También tenemos que esperar la comunidad.
We must also have hope in the community.
No podemos pasar por alto y dejar que cualquier persona que no está capacitada.
We cannot allow just anybody, even without the qualification.
Hoy vengo a hacer una invitación.
Today I make an invitation.
A la comunidad.
To the community.
Principalmente. Mainly, a la comunidad hispana que muchas veces.
Principally to the Hispanic community.
Que no viene a mirar qué es lo que está pasando con su ciudad.
That they don't see what's going on within their own city.
Y que ellos tienen en la mano la oportunidad de cambiar la vida.
And they have in their hands the opportunity to change lives.
Para la próxima generación, para la generación presente.
For the present generation as well as the next.
Porque muchas veces piensan que, ¿qué puedo yo hacer? ¿Qué puedo yo ayudar?
Because many times people are asking themselves, well, what can I possibly do? How can I help?
Ayudar a que alguien nos represente.
To help those who are representing us.
Honestly.
Honestly.
No podemos dejar y dar esta oportunidad.
We cannot leave this opportunity.
Para hacer algo para nuestra comunidad, so.
Okay.
A todos ustedes les invito, gracias.
So I invite every one of you to listen. Thank you.
Any more speaker slips, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, alright. Would any of the council members like to make their reports or comments at this time? You said yes? Oh, no? Okay. Alright, and then I also have received a request for A10, for discussion on A10. Councilmember Gaiba, do you have? So A10, I believe that's the vehicle replacement, let me check.
Yes, it is, Mayor.
It is? Okay. Report, well, okay, I'll go ahead and defer to you, whichever, whatever you'd like to say.
Thank you Mayor. I've been asked, I've received some phone calls, emails. On these purchasing of these vehicles. There's quite a bit of them here. The question was brought up several times was, how can we go out of state and buy vehicles when we have dealerships here locally? And the name's been brought up several times, Moss Brothers Motors. If we're buying Dodges, Chevys, why don't we buy them from them? They don't know the whole program, what the city does. And with this, I would direct my, my direction to our Public Works Director. And if you can explain why to the public?
Certainly, I'll be happy, Councilmember Marquez. A10 recommends 42, purchase of 42 vehicles. Back in 2015, when City Council approved the multi-year budget for vehicle replacement. They directed staff to find the most cost-effective solution, way to purchase these vehicles. That brings the highest value to the city. Staff with the help of Purchasing Division looked into many options. And we came across an Texas outfit, which is HGAC Buy. And the full name is Houston Galveston Area Council Program. This outfit is a national cooperative purchasing program. And when we checked their program and looked into their prices that they were offering for vehicles and equipment. We almost thought that it was too good to be true. In short, you know, the outfit was able to save the city somewhere in the range of 25% to 40%. Under what the local dealerships advertised for the same exact vehicle new. So staff further looked into the program and we did a pilot test of purchasing one particular vehicle. And sure enough, everything that we had heard about the HGAC or they had indicated in their program was proven to be true. Therefore, staff went forward with making sure that all the requirements are spec'd for these 42 vehicles that are before you tonight.
And Moss, the local dealers don't have those programs, correct?
That is correct.
So that's why we have to go out of state. You know, a lot of people keep saying, well, you know, why can't we, again, why can't we purchase here and keep the revenues here? There's some situations that you can't do it. And to benefit the city, we have to go out to other states and purchase vehicles or other equipment. So we're saving money and I applaud the published work and our staff for going out and looking for cheaper, not cheaper, but inexpensive vehicles for the city. So I want to say thank you staff. You save, I know you saved quite a bit of money for the city. And we'll be driving around new vehicles. Compare some of these other cities where they drive around with tailpipes falling off, tailgates are missing, windshields are busted. We don't have to worry about that. Moreno Valley will be up there and brand new vehicles. And I want to congratulate staff for that program. That's all I have, Mayor.
Just I'd like to briefly read that we are now moving on, actually, we're in our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial. It may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City Successor Agency. For the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees would like to have the item removed or for discussion. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. So we just heard A10 for discussion, seeing that the speaker buttons are not lit up here. We're going to go to public comments on consent calendar.
Yes Rafael, Burgueras.
Okay, and how many speakers?
Just him.
Ten?
No, just Rafael.
Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members, staff, guests, residents. I want to talk about A2. A2 is the one I want to speak about tonight.
Rafael, let me just fix the timer. Can we just put it back to three minutes?
Three minutes?
Yeah. Okay, can you start it over?
I'm good with that. I'm good. Thank you. I want to talk about A3 because tonight you four are going to approve April 4th meeting. April 4th is what I talked about two weeks ago and I was accused of not knowing what I was talking about. And again, I looked at it again before I came here and I saw Councilmember Gaiba clapping. And I looked at the video good and it startled me because looking from my left, from the right to the left. I didn't see Marquez clap. I didn't see Victoria Baca clap. I didn't see Dr. Gutierrez clap. Only Gaiba clapped that day after Brian Lowell got up. So tonight, Mr. Gaiba has an opportunity to apologize to Luisa who's here tonight. Because tonight, he's going to approve those minutes and it's going on the record of him clapping. So again, there's proof. So I would like to see Mr. Gaiba. A man that knows the word himself, because I seen him. I've been to his Bible classes. I've been with him and I know he knows the word. And I think this is the moment where you set down your pride and find another way to say, you know, I made a mistake, I clapped and, you know, I apologize. And I'm doing, and I made that easy for you tonight, to do that. Because tonight, you're going to approve those minutes and you're going to approve your own guilt tonight. So think about what you want to do. Luisa's here tonight, you can apologize to her. Either you can set the example for all of us that believe in Christ Jesus to be right, or you can set some of us back. Because I have paid attention to you and I always thought of you being a great man, a good man. You can change it tonight.
Alright, okay, well, any more public comments? Entertained a motion by council to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Gaiba and a second by Mayor Protembaka. Please vote when the screen appears. Okay, and it passes 4-0. We're going to move to public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a goldenrod speaker slip to the Sergeant in Arms. We're going to start with E1, Public Hearing Regarding the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDS. Report, and report by Public Works Department, Ahmad, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Michael Lloyd, Assistant City Engineer, will report that E1.
Okay, good evening Lloyd.
Good evening Mayor, Mayor Protembaka and council members. Item E1 is a request to conduct a public hearing for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Regulatory Rates. The rates only apply to those properties that have balloted into the program. The proposed rates have been adjusted to account for inflation at a 1.97% increase consistent with the Riverside County Regional Consumer Price Index. This program partially covers stormwater management, program administration, and maintenance costs. Staff respectfully request that council conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution 2017-29. Staff and our program consultant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any council questions of staff, please press your speaker button. Okay, seeing there's none, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. I entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendation Number 2.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protembaka and a second by Councilmember Marquez. And it passes 4-0. Moving on to item E2, which is the Public Hearing for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Mail Ballot Proceeding. Report by our Public Works Department, Ahmad.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Candace Castle, Special District Manager, will report on that.
Great, good evening Candace.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protembaka, members of the City Council, Candace Castle, Special District's Division Manager. This item is a public hearing to add 15 parcels into the city's NPDS funding program. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. First Industrial LP has been approved to construct a 1.4 million square foot warehouse out the southwest corner of Nandina Avenue and Indian Street. As a condition of approval of the project, the property owner is required to provide a funding source for the city's NPDS program. The revenue will be used to offset increased costs the city will incur as a result of the project. The property owner has requested a parcel charge be applied to their annual property tax bill to collect the funding. Before the city can levy the charge onto the property tax bills, the property owner must first approve it through a mail ballot proceeding. After the city conducts a public hearing, the ballot can be opened and counted. If the property owner approves the ballot, the charge will be applied to the tax bill of only those parcels identified on the ballot and will not impact any other property. Staff respectfully request the City Council conduct a public hearing and upon its close, direct the City Clerk to open the ballot and announce the results. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, if there's any questions from council, please press your button. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, I'm going to close the hearing and entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendations Number 1 and 2 to direct the City Clerk to count the returned NPDS ballots.
Second.
Or one ballot. It's a move by Councilmember Marquez and a second by Baca. Oh, voice vote? Okay, okay, so Madam Clerk, can you do a voice vote?
Yes, Councilmember Gaiba?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're going to give her a second to, or a few seconds to count it.
Mayor Gutierrez, we received one ballot. It's weighted 15 and the vote was yes.
Okay, great. I entertain, one ballot. I entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendations Numbers 3, 4, and 5?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protembaka and a second by Marquez, Councilmember Marquez. And, okay, please vote. And it's approved 4-0. That moves us on to item G1, which is Authorization for the Issuance of the 2017 Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds by the Successor Agency of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley to refund the outstanding Community Redevelopment Agency of Moreno Valley 2007 Tax Allocation Bond Series A. And we're going to let Marshall give us a report of that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protembaka, City Council Members. The report this evening recommends the adoption of a resolution to authorize the issuance of the Successor Agency of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds Series 2017 and approve the associated indenture of trust, bond purchase agreement, and the refunding instructions. This bond will refund the currently outstanding 2007 tax allocation bonds and will result in an average annual savings of approximately $155,000 or about 6.9% savings. This will result in average annual savings to the general fund of approximately $22,000. With much of the savings in the first couple of years, the first six years, you'll see about a $68,000 savings to the general fund. Tonight is really the first step in this process, so following the Successor Agency's actions this evening, the documents will require approval from the Oversight Board to the Successor Agency and the State of California Department of Finance. Then following that, we'll return back to the Successor Agency and present the final resolutions, preliminary official statement, and other related bond documents. With that, that concludes my report.
If you have any questions, you can, if you can please press your button? Okay, any public comments, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendations Number 1?
So moved.
So a motion by Mayor Protembaka and a second by Councilmember Marquez. Alright, and it's approved 4-0. We're going to move on to reports, City Council Reports on Regional Activities. I'm going to have Mayor Protembaka first go. I like the paperwork here.
Okay. I'm reporting on the Riverside County Transportation Commission, also known as RCTC. And RCTC will be developing a countywide long-range transportation plan that will provide a vision of Riverside County's future transportation system. The plan will provide a coordinated strategy for agencies to work towards reducing greenhouse gases and improving public health by providing more transportation choices for bicycling and walking. The final adopted plan will guide future investments in the county and will serve as a document to advocate for changes to transportation policy, legislation, and funding.
Thank you, Mayor Protembaka. Tonight I'm providing an update from the March Joint Powers Commission, held on May 10th. A Community Facilities District provides funding for maintaining public improvements in the March Life Care Campus. The JPC, which is the Joint Powers Commission, approved a resolution to annex two properties into the CFD, the U.S. Vets Transitional Housing Facility and the Signature Healthcare Facility. It's a brief report, so that concludes my report. And we have Councilmember Gaiba from the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG.
Thank you Mayor. So we had a wonderful conference out in the desert and learned a lot. So rather than go through that kind of report, you guys all know I actually produce an actual written report. And in this one, you're going to have photographs and everything else going down with it. Because one of the parts of this was that we took a San Andreas Fault tour. And needless to say, it was 110 degrees. We were out there straddling the San Andreas Fault. I would like to point out Sunday's... I would like to point out Sunday's Los Angeles Times article, we actually made the paper. The gentleman who wrote it was on a bus with me. I thought he looked familiar. And this was done and conducted by Lucy Jones. And while I was there, I was pleased to have run into one of the Peton Twins. I do not remember which it was, Daryl or Daniel. And they were also trying to learn more about the earthquake program that SCAG is doing. So I encourage you folks, if you wish to know the whole dealings, photographs, everything, including a wonderful map of the San Andreas Fault lines in color, I've put that all up. It'll probably be by the end of this week. It'll be up for you to get it from email, be sent out by Angels. So call my office and ask Angel to put you on the list and you'll get the whole thing. Too much to report, but lots of good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gaiba. We have a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Point of clarification, one of the speakers in public comments was critical of the council for eliminating a forensic technician position with the budget. I just wanted to make sure that the public knows, and certainly the council knows, that that position was what we call an add-on or a dedicated position. That's something that you were paying for above and beyond the contract rate with the sheriff. So eliminating that position does not eliminate forensic technician services. It was supplementing the forensic technician services that are already provided to the city through the contract. And also, I'd like to remind the public, by eliminating that add-on position as well as some other non-sworn, you are able to add two more deputies to our public safety services. So I wanted to make that clarification. And also, I'd like to ask Alan Brock, our Community Development Director, to make a brief announcement on an exciting new program we're offering our customers.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I am really excited about this project, so it's a pleasure for me to share it with you this evening. Today, we've launched what is known as our Phase Two of our permit tracking system that we launched back in December. It's called Simplicity. This is our online portal where public can go, get real-time information on permits, planning projects, code compliance cases, and a whole lot more. We launched it this morning, as I said, and it's easy to use. It's a web-based system. You can search by date, address, parcel number, project number if you have it. So there's multiple ways to get to the information that you're looking for. You can get status on a project, check your plan check, is it approved, is it still in process, inspection results, you can see whether you passed your inspection or not, whether it's scheduled, property information, any other related projects that might be on that parcel or related to a project that you have or someone else has. And this is just the latest step that we're using to unleash the full capacity of our ACP product. Again, but this portion is called Simplicity. It's our online version, and we're going to continue to improve this system. This is just the first iteration. We'll have about two more rollouts that we'll do this year that will improve the system even more. So I'm just very excited to share that with you. It was a big day for the staff. They've done a lot of hard work on this project in a very short amount of time, but we've put that out there for the public to just really improve our customer care to all of our customers, whether they're a resident, a local contractor, a business owner, or a developer. So it's a real coup for them. So thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Did the attorneys report?
Mayor, nothing tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Councilmember Gaiba?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you very much. I was at the beginning of that ACP project and we started pushing that and then had to wait all this time for it to come online, but I was excited when you just shared that information. To see what you start a couple of years ago finally come to fruition, the wheels of bureaucracy sometimes turn slower than we really like. Also, I just wanted to remind everybody that this June, not only do I have a SCAG meeting, but I'm also now part of what they call the Big Data Open Data Committee. I was appointed that, I mentioned that before, but what's nice about that is I've been speaking with Hassan Akkara, who's the Executive Director of SCAG, and also with the Executive Director of the JPA and their program with Mars, and how this program with the Big Data Open Data can also be extended beyond that with the Mars programs, with our relationships with the JPA and the other surrounding communities. So I'm looking forward to bringing that forward. It'll be my first meeting and I'll be reporting on that along with the SCAG meeting so that you guys can keep up with that one. So I just wanted to share that. It's going to be an exciting time coming up here and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I had a very exciting day last week in Riverside. I attended the supervisors' meeting and, well, Marshall, myself spoke at the Board of Supervisors, and this was pertaining to public safety, our police department budget. And for those people that haven't heard, one of the supervisors was concerned about our cost in communications, and he asked the county CFO to look into what Moreno Valley is paying for their radios, the new radio system, communication system. But at the same time, one of our supervisors wasn't too happy about us looking to go elsewhere. I did inform them, we're doing, we're in the process with a consultant to look into that. Nothing's in concrete, but he felt that, why are we complaining about our cost when we're going elsewhere? Which is not true. We're just trying to see if it's cheaper to save money, not only for the city, but other surrounding areas. I do got to say that the sheriff's department has been providing very good service. I can't complain about that. But unfortunately, the Board of Supervisors are the ones that set the budget. It's not our chief, it's not our staff, it's not our patrolmen, it's the Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Ashley, didn't want to mention names, was a little upset because we were questioning some of the line items, the budget line items, and he was kind of upset that we didn't prepare him to research the letter that we gave him. So I got some backlash, but I also got some apologies that evening from several members of his staff apologizing for his outburst, and I just wanted to pass that on to Marshall. We did get an apology, so I think we did something right, Marshall. And secondly, what I wanted to say is the animal shelter, I heard some good numbers, some good things tonight. Several months ago, I went and got a dog out of the shelter. I basically, my lifetime, I've always bought in full breeds. I was told they were easy to train and good service dogs. Well, I wanted to find out it was true. I went and got me a dog from the animal shelter and believe me, he was trained and he is a heck of a dog. I don't think I'll ever go back to buying a full breed animal. People ask me, well, what did you name him? And the story behind his name, his name is Chief, and it's named after our fire department chief. And I was working with him that day and my son called me and says, we got the dog that you wanted. So we happened to drive on over to the animal shelter and one of the animal staff says, what are you going to name him? I had no clue, and I looked up at the chief and I said, you know what, Chief. I want to name him Chief, so that's his name. And I recommend everybody to go out and go to the animal shelter, get a cat, a dog. You don't need to buy full breed dogs because these animals at the shelter will train as easy as these other dogs. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Mayor Protem Baca?
First of all, I'd like to thank our city manager for clarifying the tax on the council regarding public safety. And, you know, I want to go on the record that public safety is mandated by law. We have to have public safety in our city, and that includes fire. And I also want to say that most of our budget goes to public safety. So I don't know why Mr. Blackard continues on his rant about cutting public safety when that's not true. And that's first and foremost on our council's agenda and priorities. So I just want to say that and thank our city manager for clarifying that. The second item that I want to clarify is that the city did not stage or hold any forums for any candidates for 2017 elections. Each of the candidates had their own forums, and any candidate is free to go, whether they want to or not. I believe in 2016 that Mayor Gutierrez didn't attend any of the forums because they were held by candidates. I didn't either because, you know, to me, my opinion is that they're staged. And if you don't attend, it's not because you don't want to face the voters, it's because you have bigger and better things to do. And that includes knocking on doors, which you can't beat, and I know that. I visited the Parks and Recreation Department today and we had a very good tour of the Cottonwood Park, the golf course, and the banquet facility. So if you're looking for a facility to hold a baby shower, a wedding, I mean, it's top notch. Go there. And very inexpensive. Also went to the community park and I just want to say that we got to start saving money and getting money because we're going to have to replace that turf. It's beautiful, but it's worn. And you can just imagine with all the sun and the wear and tear, you know, it's something that we need to look at very soon. And then we have West Bluff Park, which is not in my district, but I wanted to take a look because it's a subject of a lot of discussions that we're having with the Moreno Valley Unified School District. So that's what I did today. But I also toured Public Works Department with our Public Works Director, Mr. Ansari. And I went to the city yard and was very impressed with the new building. If you ever have a chance, go out there. And I just want to let the public know that there's free mulch there. I think it's granite, I don't know, asphalt, whatever you need when you're fixing up your yard, go there and they're open on Saturdays and Sundays, Mr. Ansari?
We are, yes.
Okay, so go there early, seven o'clock perhaps, seven o'clock in the morning before the sun comes out on the weekends so they can beautify your yards. It's free. And I will be attending the Memorial Day celebrations here at the city hall at our memorial site on Monday, the 29th, and I will also be participating with our mayor in the West Coast Thunder Parade. So I look forward to you being there and come and cheer us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Baca. Just want to say thank you to all that came out tonight. We're pretty finishing pretty early tonight. And I just wanted to say I've been working with our city manager's office, especially with, for the satellite library. I know that that's already been funded, it's already in the budget, so that's a great thing and looking forward to that. Also, the Memorial Day, I'll be there at that event as well. And I'm also happy to report, actually honored to report, I was an alumni, as many of you know, of Moreno Valley College and also Valley View High School. So actually, for Valley View High School's graduation ceremony, I will be there for their graduation ceremony. And for Moreno Valley College, I was selected to be the distinguished keynote speaker for Moreno Valley College, which is June 8th. So I'm honored because I was a student there, I went to student government there, and it's a great, I'm just humbled and honored about it. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, okay, go ahead.
One more thing, I forgot. May 20th, at the Cupcake Espresso on Moreno Beach Drive, I'm going to have a morning session there, come out and have coffee with Dave. So come on out and some free coffee and some free, some sweets, cupcakes, whatever. So that's May 20th from 9:00 to 11:00 o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
It's my favorite place. Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:21 PM.